Call to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of February 1st, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Arrington is absent. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, I would that we remember all those in our community locally and globally that are less fortunate than we are, those that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. Also ask, we send special energy to our community. We know all the violence that we've been experiencing, some certain cases that are kind of bringing up a lot of that same energy and fear and hurt, being argued in the courts at this season. And so let's remember those families in our community as a whole. Finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
And I'd like to have us all remember in our prayers, the people of Hattiesburg, Mississippi. Many of us have family down there and didn't make the newspaper or anything, but there's a lot of people who came from the Laurel-Hattiesburg area. They were hit pretty hard. I'm going to be sending a letter in support of them. And on my next visit down there, I plan to meet with their mayor to assure him that we're with them. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of 1/18/17 and bills for payment on 1/27 and 2/3/2017. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski.
Are there any requests for repository sales? Okay, please give your name and...
My name's Alicia Jones. The address that I am looking into is 437 East 11th Street. We plan on fixing up the house and using it as a rental property.
So any council members? Yeah, any questions from council members?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Murzky.
Do you have, do you own property adjacent to the building or...?
No, no, I don't. But my husband and I have fixed up property before. We're new to this city, but we have fixed up property before, last home.
Any more questions?
We won't be voting on it today, but we'll be voting on it at a later date and we'll notify you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just another question.
Okay.
Being relatively or new to our community, a lot of these repository cell facilities or buildings are just land. Some of them, like what you're looking for, are actual buildings and structures. And I'm not sure how much you've been able to look into. I don't think you can enter the building before you own it or anything. And sometimes they are like at the lowest level of structural integrity. And so I just want, you know, I always say, we always say this, and we just want to remind people when we're looking at these structures that they are usually, they're available for this rate because of the kind of depravity of the structure. And you said you guys do have experience, and so I would hope that you really have to tap into that experience because, again, often these structures are very dilapidated and look better on the outside sometimes than on the inside. They've been kind of ruptured through and kind of scalped people, been through them. So just didn't want you to walk into a money trap without the experience of being able to fulfill, you know, what needs to be done. Because our goal is to get these properties back on the tax rule. And a lot of times, people get overwhelmed. And this is not you, just, we say this to anyone with a structure. They get overwhelmed because you don't know what you're walking into. And then it gets left and thrown into the whole pit again. And so I just wanted to just give you that heads up and your husband, your family, your team, that this is a pretty, probably a significant venture to look at it from that perspective as well. Okay?
Okay. I understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens to be heard, and a reminder that at 9:30, we will be suspending the meeting for a short time while we have a public hearing. So keep that in mind. And we had one person write in, Mary Lee, is she here?
No, she called in, she's not coming.
Okay, well, we'll open it up to the floor. You have five minutes. And just a reminder that policy of the board is you address us as a whole, not individuals, and keep your comments in good taste. We had a little problem last week, and we want to make sure we listen to you and that you do it the proper way. So it's citizens to be heard.
I'm not going to bite any of you. My name is McDonald, my property is 19th and Reed. You know, we got a lot of people who want to be mayor. I don't know why. The one we got ain't done nothing but spent a lot of money. I don't understand it. I don't understand. I don't even know how he got to be mayor, though, because when he was on council, you didn't even know he was up there. Next thing I know, he's the mayor. He's not a mayor for all the peoples, he's never been. I don't think he liked peoples of color because he don't visit them. The mayor's supposed to see what's going on in this city. He's supposed to be everybody's mayor. He's supposed to be concerned about everybody. But it hasn't been like that with Joe. I've seen a lot of mayors come through here, back in Tulio's time. You just can't be mayor for white folks, you got to be mayor for black folks, too. You're supposed to be mayor for everybody. If you want to be mayor, you better think about that. You better think about that. That's just like when President Obama, a lot of peoples was against him, but a lot of peoples was for him. He said, those that didn't vote for him, he's going to be mayor for them, too. I mean, our president for them, too. And he was, he did the best he could. But that was just so much racism there. You know, somebody came here one time checking on racism. They didn't go to the right, they didn't go to the right people. He went back telling them, wasn't no racism here. If ain't no racism here, I'm not here. Racism is so heavy that you could cut it with a knife, almost. Just look at your surroundings. Look at your representation. Look at your city hall, look at your judges over there. There's no justice for us, no justice at all. But you know, I'm glad there's a God up there. A lot of peoples don't believe in God, but you couldn't take a breath, the next breath if it wasn't a God up there. If you don't believe in God, you believe in the devil. You believe in Satan. That's who you believe in. Oh, boy. You better think about that lake of fire. And you know, you should read your Bible. Bible's not going to lie. That's what, that's our roadmap to heaven. The Bible's just like a roadmap, when you get a roadmap, going somewhere. But ain't what I came to talk about. I want to talk about all these peoples want to be mayor. That guy Schumer, he the one gave Joe Senate that $30,000 raise. I want the taxpayers to think about that. $30,000. He was overpaid as it was. $30,000. And times were hard back then. Now, you know, if he get to be your mayor, you're going to dig deep in your pockets. He won't get my vote. He just, he won't get my vote. And if y'all got any sense, he wouldn't get y'all's either. When he come out of your pocket, you, look at all the money's been spent out there. He'll carry on Joe Simmons' programs. And I pity the poor taxpayers. I pity our kids. He have no sympathy for them, the black ones, anyway. You never hear, you never hear nobody coming down here pleading for white kids. We plead for the black ones because they stand out. You took that little money that the council lady up there was trying to get for them? But I'm going to tell you something. You took from the poorest. Every time, our kids are the last thing y'all want to look at. And then you're always talking about, they bad, they bad. Ain't no bad kids. You make them bad, them that's bad. You don't give them no jobs or nothing in the summertime. What are you up there for? You're up there for Joe Senate. That's too bad. Joe Senate ain't going to die for you. You're going to die for yourself. And you're going to die for the wrong things you did. Those are God's kids. Those are God's kids. And you're supposed to love them like either, but you don't even like them.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you for your time.
Morning, council.
Morning.
Morning.
My name's Willie McAdory, I stay at 448 East 15th Street. I'm here this morning about a comment that I heard from one upstairs, that it's all right for the killing to keep going on in our community because it ain't going nowhere because it's staying in our community. That's a hell of a thing to say. You know, I'm looking in our community, and the kids that I see dying now, I know all those kids. Some of them were just like sons of mine. And that's a travesty. And everybody said, well, we can't stop it. Yes, you can. You got to have more police on the street. Didn't y'all just hire 20 more police, is that right? And all of them was white. Come on, man. What is going on? Y'all don't care about our kids, but we do. But then y'all have a thing about, when we say, black lives matter, that's a quote or something. That ain't no quote. We are concerned about our children. You know, we love them, too, just like you love yours. And y'all about to pay some, you know, some kind of attention to what's going on in this city. It ain't getting no better, it's getting worse. What I'm talking about now, I told y'all, me and Wayde L. Johnson told y'all this over 13 years ago that this was coming. Y'all didn't pay no heed to nothing that we said because we didn't know what we was talking about. But that proved to be a lie. And the only thing I'm saying to you is, somebody need to speak up. You got to have more police out there in the street. You say, it's all our fault, but you know where we at every weekend. Why you got police out there where we at every weekend? Yeah, we going to complain why the police, because we need them. Why the police, you know, around us, because we need them. Police would deter crime. If the kids see that the cops is in that area, around there somewhere, they will not do what they are doing. They're leaving one spot, going to another spot, and then there's always somebody dying. Why is that? If you can't stop it, then why don't the mayor call for martial law in this town? Y'all got to stop our children from getting killed. And I'm not saying it's your fault that they getting killed because our kids are doing the shooting, okay? But I'm saying, we got to stop this. And I'm saying to black folks here, it ain't up to y'all, white folks, to stop this here. It's up for us to stop this. Only one that's killing our kids is us. And I pray every night, Lord, behold. I don't get a call, 3 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning, and I have to pick the phone up, and somebody said, your son just got killed. I don't know how I would react to that. And I pray to God that it don't happen. But somebody got to say something, you got to do something. You got to do something. Hey, man, ain't nobody up there saying nothing. Ain't saying nothing. Don't y'all think we out here, we watching y'all? And you ain't saying nothing? Then you asked me the question, well, who you want to say something? All y'all up there? What, it's one of y'all running for mayor this term? Yeah, you, Murzky. Hey, man, what is you going to do? You know, just like running for mayor now, you don't tell the policies of what you got in mind and what you want to do for the city. You're just like Donald Trump. Y'all just like Donald Trump, don't know nothing.
Not quite. Not quite.
I don't understand that. Politics in America don't change for some reason. What's going on now? I have never seen it in my 75 years, that nothing like this ever went down. You know, I had said to my friends in the street, old man Donald Trump is going to be president. I said to them, I said, there's no way Donald Trump could be president of the United States. They said, well, why is that? I said, in these 75 years here, I have always watched white folks. White folks never had an ignorant individual to speak for them in this country, never. I can't say that because you had Bush, too, the last one. I mean...
Thank you, Mr. McAdory. Rose, should we start?
Yeah.
We're going to suspend temporarily the citizens to be heard while we conduct our public meeting. You'll be welcome after the public hearing. You're welcome to come back, and we'll start with citizens to be heard again.
Okay, pursuant to the provisions of zoning ordinance number 80, 2005, and the proper legal advertising, the city council will hold a public hearing approximately 9:30 a.m. today to consider a request for waterfront conditional use submitted by Lakefront Realty for an eating and drinking place located at East Dobbins Landing, the property being located in the waterfront commercial district.
Can somebody from the...
We've got some answers if you want to...
Sure, I'll start off.
Yeah, please identify yourself for the audience.
Good morning. Thank you for conducting this public hearing. My name is Adam Trot of Adam J. Trot Architect. With me, I have the owners of the proposed establishment, Tim Sedney and Gary Lebel. And then my assistant is Sarah Ludwig. I bring this project here today with a lot of enthusiasm because all of us that know how East Dobbins Landing is, there's buildings there, there's pavement there, there's not a whole lot of definition out at that end of the landing. And what these owners have done is put together a project that takes that end of East Dobbins Landing and finally articulates it so you can see what site is doing what, and it gives weight finding and all that to that end of the landing, and finally brings it to fruition about what it can be. In this particular case, if you look at the very first sheet in your handout, the zoning site plan, it shows that there are two structures on the south side of East Dobbins Landing, which is the Canal Basin side. And in between those two is where we propose the floating bar. The barge structure is already there. It's 2,000 square feet in area. And we're proposing to put an open-air, seasonal-use-only bar of the enclosed area is about 700 square feet. And it's to work to enhance the activity on that end of East Dobbins Landing, which already sees the activity from run runners. This structure, it's an interesting structure because it involves, first, a marine architect to design everything nautical about it. And then from that marine architect, we get a platform by which we construct the actual bar covering and enclosure, and that's under the building code. So they've already been through all the marine architecture tasks. And we've also already been through, as you know, the design review and the planning This structure will be seasonal from May to probably through September. Obviously, if October's weather is like it's been, it might even extend to that. The site itself, the requirement for green area for developing down in that WC waterfront commercial district is 1,354 square feet of green space. We've created over 1,800 because we felt that's what the site should have. The height, the allowance for that area is allowed up to 50 feet high. We're just a little over 15 feet high. And the thing I like about that is it doesn't create a wall walling off the views of the bayfront from the south area, which is the Bayfront Parkway, Hammond, everything up on that east bluff. Instead, it's a lower structure, and it gives you visual through to see the bay between the two buildings that are already there. So that's another thing we liked about this project. There's all these positives that we like about it. So this is technically a conditional use, eating and drinking establishment in the waterfront commercial district. The bar itself is about 300 square feet, and the enclosed area has about 35 stools in it and an ADA spot that we're required to have. And then there's additional seating and patron area on land in that little concrete patio area that you see at the end of the gangplank before you get onto the barge bar. There's also a food truck along the east property line, and there's restrooms that are landscape screened. We worked that out with the design review. So we're here today to take any questions and if you need any further explanation. And Tim, did you want to say anything about what you're doing there?
We've done a lot of things on the bayfront down there. I've been invested into the bayfront for many, many years. My family's been down there since 1976. We opened Rum Runners in August of 88 and have been there ever since. The building directly behind Rum Runners is being totally rehabbed right now, and a lot of money has been put in. An entire new seawall has been put in along that property, along the East Canal Basin. Directly right next to the Rum Runner property would be where Woody's Backwater Barge and Grill would be. And then to the west of that is another building that we've totally rehabbed on the exterior with the hope that we're going to lease that building out. So infrastructure-wise, we've dumped about $650,000 into that, along with the gentleman who's rehabbing the back building, which he's dumped a large sum of money into that also. So by the time everything is finished down there, you're looking at about a $3 million investment just from private monies. And we hope to be there for a long time. We think that this is a very ambitious and a great project. It'd be great for the community, it's great for the boaters. We will have dock space available to all of those people, along with the patrons driving in by car, so on. So we're very excited about it and hope that you are, too.
Is there any member of council that has a question? Go ahead, Mr. Brennan.
I have a question. I think you maybe may have said this already, but the ramp gives handicap access?
Yes, it does.
Okay, I thought, you may have said that, so I apologize if you said that already. Another quick question, I have actually three kind of questions, but the railing design, what is that railing? Is that rope or metal or...?
The railing that goes around the barge itself?
Yeah.
Yes, that is rope with netting. It's a nautical design, very similar to what you see down in Disney World. They have it everywhere down there.
Yeah, so it gives it like a theme?
Exactly, exactly.
And that'll be up all year round, that railing?
Yes, it will.
Yes, and I'd like to add, it's completely code compliant, and the beauty of it is, it's locally sourced.
Great, great.
Most everything we're doing on the project is locally sourced, and that's a great thing for all of us. We will be employing approximately 30 people, up from the 15 that I originally stated to you folks here about a year ago. So we're up to about 30 because our capacity on the barge was increased by our naval architect to 120 people. So there's a lot of people that you could put on the barge, along with the landside property, seating and availability there for about another 45 to 50 people. So it's a big restaurant.
My last question, the question is, in the wintertime, does it get like shut down and secured and all that? There's nothing that happens there in the wintertime?
No, nothing that would happen there in the wintertime. It would all be winterized and shut down.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Murzky?
Mr. President, I just wanted to, first off, thank you for your investment in our waterfront. I was down there recently showing a friend of mine from Scranton around Erie, and I noticed the cosmetic work that you did on the building behind Rum Runners, and it looks fabulous. So if that's any indication of what this project's going to look like at its fruition, you have a really impressive facility there.
Thank you.
So thank you for that. And I just wanted to, again, thank you for your investment in this. In terms of what it, operation, is it going to be similar to Rum Runners in, with the dock area?
With dockage area, yes. It'll be jet skis, dock, dock space for boats, things like that. And then, of course, we have a large parking lot area that will all be landscaped, as you could see in the drawings there.
I think this is going to be a huge asset to that area and to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes, you mentioned that you would plan to hire around 30 employees. What percentage of minorities you plan to hire?
We hire a lot of minorities, sir. There's quite a few people throughout my restaurants. I employ 168 people totally, and probably about 30 to 40% of those are minorities.
Thank you.
Mr. Winarsky?
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming in this morning. And I may not have caught this earlier, but parking should not be any issue at all down there? You actually added parking?
We added quite a bit of parking down there. There was a building that was out in front of the Lund property that was demolished here just a little over a year ago. And right there alone, we added 26 spaces just on that piece of property. Total, we've created 48 new parking spaces down there, which is a tremendous amount for that little area that was down there. Rum Runners has always been a success, and it's been a disaster for parking.
I know, that's why, that was your...
But we've opened up a lot, and our patrons certainly appreciate it. Everything has been paved, everything is striped, so now you have some semblance of, you know...
Very good, appreciate that. Mrs. Arrington?
Excuse me, I'd like to add that the project required 25 spaces, and we've provided 33, specifically for this project.
Thank you.
Are there going to be local contractors building this for you?
Yes, there are. Everybody that is working on the job, they're all local contractors.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones, any comment?
I'd just like to say that I'm in support of the project. I think it's great down there. If I have one complaint, I wish we could have stayed open in winter, but...
I wish we, I wish we could, too. As you know, the Rum Runners closes every year.
Yeah, weather doesn't bother me, and I think it'd add a different insight, but, you know, I hope that it goes ahead and good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there, any citizens want to speak in favor of the project?
I'm employed from Tim. I've been, this is my 17th season.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Eddie Cook.
Okay.
I'm one of his captains. He sent me to school to get my captain's license. I've been, this is my 17th season down there. It's like a second home to me. He's like a brother of him down there. Good man. He's been doing a lot. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to speak in favor of the project?
Ed Kissel, 2815 Sigsby. I do have a few questions. Access is usually required along the water's edge for a public walkway. I did not get a chance to go to the design or the planning commission, so I'd like to ask if there's any accessibility on the backside for the general public that in the future, that, or a few years back, that pier was looked at as having sheet piling all the way around it, like the west side where the Sheridan is. And it did provide the public the amenities to go around the back and the side of it. I'm just wondering that if and when the east side should determine by the owners to put sheet piling for future development, what access will there be in the back? And also, the parking places that are being provided, will those be policed as private parking places only for the tenants that are down there frequently or actually using the restaurants? Otherwise, I have no problem with the project.
Would somebody like to answer that from...
Sure.
Okay.
I can, I can address that. The... The property along the south side of where Woody's is and where the old Lund building was is actually Port Authority property on the backside. So that would have to be addressed by the Port Authority. There's a section of about a, I would say twenty-five to thirty feet back there that is actually owned to them. We own up to that area, but everything south of our property line is owned by the Port Authority. As far as the parking spaces, they will be available to anybody. I mean, we're not going to police that. There won't be any, you know, charging for that or anything like that.
Are there any other citizens speak in favor of the project? Any other citizens to speak in favor of the project? Are there any citizens that want to speak against the project? Please step up and identify yourself.
I'm McDonald. My property's in Eighteenth and Reed. I think we got enough water holes. Those kids from Gannon, they got enough bars to go in and out. On the weekends, sometimes you see a crowd of those kids and those, I don't, I don't think the kids' parents send them to school to go to be bar hopping. I think we got enough bars. We don't need another one. I don't care what nobody say, I don't care how much money they gonna put down there. There's enough bars in there. I seen the times they didn't even lie a bar on State Street. Now you can't hardly go a block without stumbling over a bar. That's encouraging kids to drink and I think is wrong.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to speak against the project? Any other citizens to speak against the project? Are there any citizens to speak against the project?
Mr. President, I just had a quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Brennan.
Maybe just a business question that just dropped in my mind. Is this going to just simply be open for public use all the time or are you going to like do private bookings? Is that going to be an option that may restrict use of the facility at different times? Or is that, I know that's a business plan issue, I don't know, but.
I truly don't see us being accessible for private parties because the facility is only so large.
Right.
I limit Rum Runners and I also limit the Cove Restaurant that I own. And the Cove, we have a section of about forty people that we could put in for a private party, which does not interfere with the operation of the restaurant. It still gives us over a hundred and seventy seats.
Right.
At this facility here, I don't see us being accessible for private parties. I really don't.
All right, thank you.
I will now hear, I guess, Mr. Puz.
Good morning, Council President and esteemed members of council. My name is Matthew Puz and the Secretary to the Planning Commission and I'm here to read the Planning Commission's recommendation regarding this project. The City of Erie Planning Commission at the regular meeting on December twentieth, two thousand sixteen, reviewed an application by Lakefront Realty LLC for an eating and drinking place located at East Dobbins Landing, index number ten forty-six dash one oh three. The property is located in the W.C. Waterfront Commercial District. Since all changes in use are conditional uses in this district, the proposal shall be presented to the governing body for their approval. After reviewing the application, the Planning Commission unanimously recommends that council approve the eating and drinking place. The commission believes that the eating and drinking place should be granted a building permit on the grounds that, one, all of the design review, excuse me, all of the design review committee's concerns were addressed and, two, this is an appropriate use for this property. The City of Erie Design Review Committee at the regular meeting on December seventh, two thousand sixteen, voted three to zero to approve the eating and drinking place, subject to all landscape requirements being addressed. Are there any questions?
Any question, Mr. Jones?
No, I haven't been asking.
Okay, no questions? Thank you, Mr. Puz.
Thank you.
That concludes the public hearing and we will be voting on this at a later date and you'll be notified, correct, Rose?
Yes, uh-huh, next meeting.
Thank you and good luck.
Thanks, guys.
We'll give him a minute to clear here. We'll continue with citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens to be heard? Are there any citizens to be heard? Are there any citizens to be heard? Rose, if you continue with the meeting?
All right, ordinances for final passage. Council File Number fifteen nine seventy-seven, Ordinance Number two twenty-seventeen, an ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from unappropriated revenue received from a Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Act one oh one, Section nine oh two, municipal recycling program grant and providing for the expenditure thereof. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number fifteen nine seventy-seven, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number two twenty-seventeen, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Ms. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number two twenty-seventeen, finally by a Council File fifteen nine seventy-eight, Official Ordinance Number three twenty-seventeen, an ordinance appropriating the sum of eight thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue from Star Athletic Club for the Bureau of Fire of the City of Erie.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Murzky?
I just wanted to speak on this if you could change.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank the Star Athletic Club for their donation of eight thousand dollars to the city for our Bureau of Fire. A lot of the clubs in the City of Erie donate to our public safety either directly or through programs like cameras around their building, which they then allow our police access to if a crime's committed in that area. And they're really part of the fabric of our neighborhoods and so I want to thank the Star Athletic Club for this eight thousand dollar grant or donation.
Any other comments?
By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number fifteen nine seventy-eight, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number three twenty-seventeen, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Kowalski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number three twenty seventeen, finally by a seven na zero.
And that takes us to new business rules?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Mr. President, move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second. What was that, to waive the?
Move the balance of the agenda.
Okay, sorry, let's look at this.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to waive the rules in a second, all in favor?
Mr. President?
Yes.
The motion is to move the balance.
Move the balance.
Move the balance of the agenda and then I think it was seconded.
Okay, I got it, okay.
Yes, sir.
I lost track. Are there any separations first?
I'd like to separate. Pardon? Number one, please.
Under?
New break, please.
Okay, are there any other separations? Any other separations?
None other, okay. Moving the balance of the agenda then. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement to maintain real estate taxable status with the Erie County Convention Center Authority. The agreement is in conjunction with a redevelopment assisted capital program, RACP grant application. The RACP grant being sought is for five million dollars, which will be utilized for infrastructure costs of the authority's GAF site. The purpose of the agreement is to ensure to the greatest extent possible that the developed site remains liable for real estate taxes. Discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes?
As maker of this motion, I wanted to just bring this to the attention of the community. What the Convention Center Authority has done is they asked us to apply for a grant to the state to put in the infrastructure, which will help developers with those costs. That way they won't have to absorb those costs into their project. This is the water and sewer lines, the electrical lines, gas lines, those types of things. In exchange for that, us submitting that grant, what we're asking them to agree to is to maintain the taxable status of that land. We all know that our waterfront is limited, there's only so much water to go around and we also know that there is already a significant amount of our waterfront that is tax exempt from the county library to the convention center and so forth and so on. So what this is, is an insurance policy for the citizens of the City of Erie that those, that property at the GAF site will remain taxable. And I think that's a good move for our citizens and it's a good move for the city. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. We have three, three wave rules, Mr. President. Okay.
Thank you, Rose.
Yes?
Pardon, go ahead.
Wave rules, number one. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Ms. Kowalski, that City Council adopts this resolution in support of Mr. Chesterly's initiative to encourage habitat for native bees and recognizes the significant role in the pollination of plants and food.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Murzky.
We did this about three years ago.
Oh, nine.
Nine years ago and he called and he's one of the, with the bees being under attack and dying off, he asked us just as a resolution to support his efforts to save the bees and I said I would gladly do that.
I know, I know it sounds funny, but they had a little complaint about it out in Mill Creek and, so I mean, any other comments? Go ahead, Rose.
Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. Second wave rules. Voting away the rules. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kowalski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that Erie City Council respectfully requests our local senator and all state representatives consider allocating at least ten percent of the gaming revenue to be distributed evenly between the City of Erie and the Erie School District, providing for compensation for the lost revenue from property taxes not collected by the tax exempt status of the majority of our local regional assets.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Murzky.
We put this on the agenda, we spoke briefly about it a couple meetings ago and it didn't go anywhere and I thought we would put it on the agenda today because of the timing of the legislature going, looking at the reauthorization of the gaming money and the gaming revenues. And it's my belief that the City of Erie was excluded the last time that they distributed those funds. We can't keep doing business as usual and the status quo with the gaming funds is give it to the arts, give it to the regional assets at the expense of the city. And I applaud those regional assets, I think they're great entities, but we have to understand that what we're doing is subsidizing the very things that are sucking taxes out of the City of Erie and putting that on the backs of our local homeowners. To me, that needs to be reviewed, so what I'm asking our legislators to do is to take ten percent of the money that the county receives, give five percent to the school district and five percent to the City of Erie. For this reason, the City of Erie hosts all the regional assets in, for the greater Erie region, from the zoo to the playhouse to the library, all these regional assets that are here and we get nothing in return. But if our, if there's a fire, our firefighters are going there. And who picks up the tab? Our local taxpayers. And so I think it's a matter of economic justice, I think it's a matter of doing the right thing and I think it's a matter of righting a wrong that was done when they initially started the gaming authority and distributing the money the way they did. Thank you.
Any other?
I guess Mr. Brennan? A question, the, I mean, what are the percentages now? I guess the request is to have ten percent go to the, five percent to the city, five percent to the county or to the, the school district?
Correct.
So what would, what is all goes, what all, what all happens now, I guess? I know that's a pretty long answer, but.
Right now, fifty percent goes to the county and fifty percent goes to the gaming authority. And then one million of it, after one summit gets their million dollars, half of it goes, the remaining, half goes to the county and half goes to the gaming.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, question.
I think, I don't remember having a significant conversation about this, although I agree in principle. Has there been any conversation with the school district? Are they in support? Are they cosigning something with, you know what I mean, just if we're going to go out and I think appropriately as a city, partner with the district to get more revenue for our entities? What's the interaction been with the school district and their solicitor team, administration, et cetera?
Mr. President, I'll answer that.
Yes, go ahead.
I did go to the last, well, it was two school board meetings ago and I did discuss this with Dr. Badums and Senator Loughlin was there and the school board and they, they were all in favor. And if we, if we want, we can ask them to do a similar resolution.
Yeah, I think, Mr. President, I think that would be appropriate. You know, if we're going to send out something and it has another entity's group, they should be in support more than just in a verbal. I think there should be some written partnership alliance. I think it'll strengthen the numbers.
We can ask them to do that.
And I think that would be appropriate if we were to pass this.
No one, no one on the school board was against it.
Any other comments? You don't see any problem with it, do you, Mr. Zach? I'd just like to say I, I'm glad Mr. Murzky did this. I have been battering Flo and Pat, Ryan and all of them. I think it was a great misjustice when the host city of every casino, some were addressed and some weren't because the term contiguous was used. Because we don't physically touch their border, we don't get a dime and we continually have not got a dime except for a few minor projects. I think that's a great misjustice. If you travel to Commonwealth and you look at the effect that the Bethlehem Casino supplies money to Allentown and other casinos supply money to host cities, you look at Erie who could, as Mr. Murzky said, we supply the water line out there. There'd be no casino without a water line. There'd be no horse burns. There'd be no horse racing, no, nothing out there. And, and to continually go along with the status quo, I think now we have a chance. In the past, they said they never wanted to change because they didn't want to open up that door. Well, the door's been open now, so I think we should try to jump in and I think it's only fair that the city get a decent share of the, of the revenues because you know what? We share in some of their problems also, as Mr. Murzky said. We send support out to them, we provide many of the amenities that draw the people here that will eventually use the casino. So I'm in favor of this. Pardon? Yeah, and the buses, right.
Mr. President, just a couple more questions, just as I'm, just thinking as we're going I know the, as of, right now, the administration doesn't see anything, any hiccups. Has there been dialogue with the administration? I know Mr. Murzky's been kind of navigating this. So has there been dialogue with the administration? And again, for me, it's about coalescing like the team to present to our legislators or to the legislation, you know, this endeavor. The other thing also is there, could you speak to the kind of communication with our state senator, our state representatives, you know, our Pennsylvania Erie delegation downstate?
Sure. Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Murzky.
I, I briefly spoke with the administration about it and there was no, no indication either way that they were, they said it's a councilmatic issue and not necessarily a administrative issue for them and they had no problem with it. They said, you know, as a matter of council, you've done resolutions before and, you know, they said as a council, you have your own independence and you can do that. In terms of the. In terms of the communication with our state reps, I did communicate with all of them. I also communicated with Ryan, Pat, Flo, Sean, not Sean, Dan Loughlin was senator-elect at the time, and I sent a letter to him, and I spoke with him afterwards at the school board meeting. I spoke personally to Flo, to Pat, and to Ryan, and I also to the leadership of both the Senate Republican and House Republican and Democrats. I sent it to, a letter to all of them personally, you know, and this was probably about three months ago, two months ago, and I thought that it deserved a vote from this council to show that all of us on this council as a body believe that we can't keep doing business as usual, and the way that the money's distributed doesn't make any sense, because the people who suffer the most are our people in the city in this region, but all the money is going to everybody else. So that was the rationale.
And what bugs me is that, that revenue was intended for these host communities to have police and fire, yet you see Summit still using state police, and nothing's changed, you know? And I just think this is an issue of fairness, and it's time, you know, we took a stand, and if this does nothing more than tell them that we're behind them, and I would encourage the public to call your legislators and make your feelings known. I know you tell us when we're around town, but call them and tell them how you feel about this. This is important, it's a, you know, we could use a little economic help.
Mr. President, I would, I would really love to get something in writing from the administration in support. I think just, again, I think it just bodes well for the effort. I know it's just a letter in the resolution, and I respect that, and we've done that before, and, and I think we should do that, I'm not, in any way, and I don't mean to sound as if I'm contrary, I'm not, but I just think if we're going to do this, there might be an opportunity, because the door's been opened, to get as many people who are agreeing in principle to, to agree in writing a letter of support or a similar something from the administration, from the school district or the school board and the school administration to kind of show this strong push towards our legislators to, to fight for this for us in Harrisburg. So that's all.
I'd be curious where the county's...
They probably won't be happy, but...
Yeah, why not, why, why not, you know? We have three, we have three, what, three city representatives on county council? I, I think we, we reach out and have that further conversation, you know, I think the, we have to be able to, to have vehement conversations and disagreements on policy and ideas, but still get back to other business as well. So I, I, you know, as many people as we could get or groups, entities, that would say the same thing to our legislators and show that they are supported here to support us there, I think would be great.
How about if, you know, it's within my power to like to, you know, have maybe a couple of our members approach these people, would that be okay?
You know, respectfully, however, you know, it, it happens, I know Mr. Murzky's been stream, you know, kind of taken a lead on it, so it could continue that way, or, you know, we can do it as a group, or however.
Mr. Potowski, how about, since we were the stakeholders and Mr. Jones is concerned, how about the three of us do it?
Yeah, that'd be good. I was going to suggest Mr. Jones and you, for sure. I think, you know, we could, we could talk to the mayor and the superintendent, you know, I think it makes a lot of sense, but, you know, the more support we got, the better.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Rose.
Roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski.
So you get a hold of us, Mr. Murzky, and we'll, you know, set up a time.
Voting on the wave rules for Resolution 20. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. By Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Jones, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the president of city councils authorized and directed to retain an attorney to represent Erie City Council for the purpose of intervening in the zoning appeal caption "Save Our Native Species of Lake Erie, Inc." versus the zoning hearing board of the city of Erie, which is pending in the Erie County Court of Common Pleas at docket number 13093-2016 in support of the position that the public accessway constructed on the former GAF property, Bayfront property located at 216 West Bayfront Parkway violates the city of Erie zoning ordinance because city council never considered or approved the public accessway as required by Section 306 of the city of Erie zoning ordinance because city council never considered or approved the public accessway as required by Section 306 of the city of Erie zoning ordinance.
Any comments? Mr. Murzky?
Mr. President, just a few comments. Who, Rose, can you repeat, who were the makers of the motion?
Sponsored by Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Jones.
Okay. I was just curious, did anyone talk to our city solicitor or our city zoning officer before putting this in?
I, I did not, but I read all the information and spoke to several people who were at the, all the hearings, and read all the information, but I didn't have a direct conversation with them.
Since we, I feel like we don't, we, we did hear from one side a few times, and we didn't get the other side. My concern is the, the lawsuit, as I see it, is the Sons of Lake Erie versus the city zoning hearing board that we appoint. I think we should talk to the zoning hearing board, our solicitor, and our zoning officer before we take legal action. I just think that's the prudent course of action, so I would like to make a motion to table this.
All right.
Is there any other comment?
I, I, I don't think that we're, I don't think the intention of this resolution, at least my reason I was willing to second it, was to enact anything except an option for us if we choose to add, along with further conversation. I think at the study session, there was at least a general consensus that there was some procedural avoidance, and, and we don't like that. We, it's been happening quite a bit in a lot of different areas, and the, again, at least my interpretation of the conversation Thursday, was that we were in general in agreement. Now, I knew, I do know that, and agree that there was no conversation about, directly about hiring or, or retaining an attorney. I think that might have been maybe a lower level part of the conversation or a deeper part of the in-passing conversation. But I think to, to me, again, this, this resolution is not to say we have to do anything. I think it just gives us the option as we move forward in asking more questions and trying to figure out what's happening. I do know I was around, and I hate to, I feel like one of those old guys, I'm so young, but I was, I mean, this was a big issue. This waterfront conditional use, city council involvement, public hearing, public involvement, public statement was a crucial, crucial, crucial issue that was led by then-councilwoman Heran Kunsah when we did ordinance, or, or, when we redid our zoning ordinance. And, and it was always, any kind of development, in the spirit of that, was any development that was done on the waterfront under the understanding of conditional use or the, or the line of conditional use needs to have public opinion or hearing, and it needed to have some councilmatic involvement, because we've, we say it, it's our last jewel, our last precious piece of property, and that's why council has to have some input, and it's another check and balance and another level of involvement. So I don't want to overtalk it, but I just think for me, this resolution is not to say we have to go and get involved in this fight. I think we are, we have a, we have a part to play. I don't think this makes us get an attorney, just gives us the option if we feel as if we need to. And it's good to have an extra arrow in your quiver when you, when it's necessary. We won't have to come back to this body, wait for another meeting, and, and go through all of that. This is not binding us, I don't think, to doing anything except giving us another option. So that's why I would be in support of, of, of moving forward and, you know, passing it.
Mr. President? Mr.?
That's not what the, the resolution says. The resolution says retain an attorney for the purpose of intervening in the zoning appeal. So it, that's what it's exactly saying to do, is to intervene if, if necessary.
So I think there's, we, and I think we've all agreed that there's more conversation, and I would even be willing to take that component out, for us to, excuse me, authorize, and we can change the language.
Or put "if necessary." It right here doesn't say anything about it.
I don't have a problem with that. Again, my, my rationale for supporting is, we said it even in caucus, we touched, people started asking, okay, what's it going to cost? What's, who's it going to be? Well, those are pieces that we won't even, we're not even engaged in that yet, but we may not ever have to engage in that. I just think this, again, gives us another tool if we feel like the process was not done appropriately. It gives us a, a tool to be able to, to do something about it. And I think it's, and I think it's two, to be, you know, the elephant in the room, respectfully, is that the Sons in another group or an outside group or a pseudo-governmental community group is kind of leading this, and they aren't. They did bring some things to our awareness, which we all agreed with on last Thursday, that we felt like there was a little bit of something that should have been done differently. So for me, I'm taking respectfully Ed Kissel and the Sons out of it. This, for me, is procedural, this is, was the process done appropriately? If it wasn't, then we need to do the process appropriately. For the last couple of years, we've been, as a body, as a council, saying that certain things have been getting around us, things have not been coming to us, we just had this conversation about contract bids and RFPs going out, we, this, this is the same thing to me. And so for me, this is, again, an opportunity for us to kind of, wait a minute, oh, okay, this was brought to our attention. Respectfully to Mr. Carley in the solicitor's office, the statement that was made in, in caucus was that, well, if this happens, then the resolution's going to be that the Sons want to, respect, I, I don't know what that's going to be, and, and, and I, I'm not one of the Sons, so I, I don't know what their intention is, but their intention has nothing to do for me in this effort. It's about what is the process, was the process done appropriately, is council being circumvented, is public input, public involvement being circumvented in these processes, in particular in our waterfront area?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Wouldn't, but that's not what this says. This says that we're going to intervene and that we're taking the position in support of the position that it was constructed violating the city zoning ordinance. We've never gotten a legal opinion on that, we're just taking that at face value. Would it be prudent for us to hire a solicitor to ask that question before we sign on in court legally to say, yeah, we believe this, and we've never spoken to an attorney? I guess that's my concern, is that to just jump in without thinking it through and without consulting with legal representation is problematic, and I just think it's reckless.
Mr. President? Yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
My concern is similar to Councilman Jones. I'm not concerned about the Sons and what they want and don't want. My concern is it is written that it should have come through us. That is the point. It didn't, let's correct it, because if we don't, it's going to happen again and again and again, and I know you don't like that. So I, I suggest we move on.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Brennan?
Just to kind of add on to what has been said already, but it is, it is not just about the existing walkway. To me, it's about the, a review of the conditional use approval process, the whole process that has gone, gone through. And my other concern is about the public's right to a public hearing on these projects. Like, we just had today, we had a public hearing for Bayfront Development, which is important, and people got to give their, the say of what they think about the project. But the zoning ordinance states that any new development located at the water's edge is required of a public access, is a conditional use, as is all development in WC zoning, and must be voted on by city council. So I guess the clarification is, is, is that, is just that, you know, why, why weren't we reviewing this? And then, but in my opinion, I think this is worth the effort to ensure, you know, again, the second part is that the public, that we have public input on these projects, so we just don't, all of a sudden, there's a, there's a walkway down there, or whatever's going to happen in the future. So it's not just about this walkway, it's about, it's about the whole future process, conditional use process as we go forward.
Mr. President? Yes, Mr. Witherspoon. Just so everybody knows out there, we did have a study session with the Sons, and this is nothing against the Sons, nothing against the Civic Center Authority, anything like that. What we, when we had our study session, it was something that already happened, and at no point in our study session was it, if you, if city council supports us in this, which I believe the majority of us did, to the extent that, yeah, this should have come before city council, but due to technicalities, they, they got around us on it, plain and simple. There was technicalities, they could get around us on it, and they did it. Do I want it to happen again? No way. But with that being said, at no point in that study session did it say the city council should retain a lawyer costing taxpayer dollars to get another legal opinion on it. I think at this point, what we need to do is, so those technicalities don't happen again, we change the ordinance that is in place to make sure this doesn't happen again, so we're not in this type of predicament. I mean, at this point, there isn't a lot of Bayfront property left, but we're doing a hindsight thing. Am I 100% happy with the walkway down there? No. Is it a end-of-the-day issue? I don't think so either, but like I said from the start, it's not picking sides or anything, I just don't want to be spending money to go fight this in court after it's done. I say there's an easier way in changing the ordinance so it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, I think we definitely need to, to change ordinance and clarify to make sure it's, it's much more clear. I think, I think everyone agrees, agrees to that, but, you know, I, I think we'll, we'll definitely get there, but for now, we're just looking at the, trying to authorize our city council president to, to get an attorney involved if we choose to do so.
It, Mr. President?
So we, we could adjust this if we need to.
I, if, Mr. President, if I would be willing to, to, you know, propose some amended language to this, again, my intent may, is maybe a little different than the letter of the literal resolution, so I would be willing to, you know, if we would, if there is an appetite of council to, to amend this, to, to be a little more clear on what maybe our intention is, because whether, you know, each, each of us have made statements around this conversation, have hinted around or directly said that we do need some kind of legal opinion on whether the ordinance was followed appropriately or not, or, so I think there is some room where we need to have an opinion, a legal opinion respectfully different from our administration's or the solicitor's office, because we already know what that is, and I think many of us disagree with that. Not being legal minds in that, or educated as legal minds. So I would be willing to amend this, and, and we could, and we've done it before, you know, on the open floor, come up with the appropriate language that we're all agreeable to. I, I, I think at the end of the day, one way or the other, there is an appetite for some kind of a different legal opinion, or a, not necessarily different, but a, a separate legal opinion that may be very much in line with what the administration has said, and may be very different. So I, I don't know, if there's an appetite to amend it, I would be willing to do that, even in the public on the floor, to adjust it where we have language in the, the resolution that is satisfying to the body or majority of the body.
Mr. President? It's my understanding that this isn't on the court docket for any time in, in the foreseeable future, so, again, I, I made a motion to table so that we could do just that. Mr. Brennan, you, you said you didn't consult with the solicitor's office, so who wrote this ordinance, or this resolution?
The, it was assisted by the Sons of Lake Erie.
Okay.
Then I, I put it into, in the text, and then somebody...
Okay. So, again, I think that the, the proper way to proceed with this is to, I mean, I'm unopposed to looking at a new set of eyes from our solicitor that we hire. My concern are two things. Number one, the cost to the taxpayers, to Mr. Winarsky's point, it's already built, and quite frankly, I've not received one phone call complaining about it, ever. If we need to change the ordinance, and that's the will of council, that we want to, you know, control how the sidewalks are built, then we can change the ordinance. Two, when we look at this, we have to be careful of what's the remedy, because then if the remedy, if the judge says... Because then if the remedy, if the judge says, tear it out and rebuild it, that's additional cost to the taxpayers to the tune of tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't know if that's the proper course moving forward, and the most prudent use of our resources and the resources of the taxpayers, both of the city, and I imagine the convention center would have to do it, and the county. So, again, I have a motion to table on the floor, I don't know if we're going to get a second.
I'd be willing to second that, that motion, and, well, we moved to second it, so we have to vote on it.
We're moving to table it, then?
I would second it. With the caveat and understanding that I don't mean, like, in a month from now, like in our next meeting in two weeks, I'd like to have something, have navigated this process a little bit more, and I'm always in for the right perspective and the right people to do things the right way. So I would, again, I would second that with the expectation that we would have it on the agenda again in our next meeting.
Would it be the appetite of the council to have a study session Thursday?
I would.
Pardon?
If not this Thursday, now, next Thursday would be better, this Thursday is kind of busy.
Yeah, we'll make sure that if the administration will assure us that the proper representatives will be there.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Okay, now, we have the opinion of the administration, and we're going to have the administration give us the same opinion?
No, no.
We don't have any representation? We put money in there for legal fees.
I agree.
Why is it a problem to have legal representation?
I think Curtis just wanted to hear the other side. Correct, Mr. Jones?
Well, I think we already know what the other side is. I don't think that's going to change, so the administration would be there to represent what they've been representing. For me, I'm willing to have more dialogue with us and the zoning hearing board and all the parties involved. I think at the end of the day, one way or the other, to Mr. Witherspoon's point, we have money that we put aside for legal support that we need, that fees that we would need as a body, but I want to make sure that we're utilizing those funds appropriately, again. And I would respect the opinion, and I'm always open, you all know me, I'm open to, okay, maybe I was looking at it one way, and maybe there's another way to look at it. So for me, my intention was not to jump into a court case, it was to get a legal opinion, which I think we all agree that we need, and I think to find out if the process was circumvented or done appropriately. But again, with all that, without restating all of that, we need, I think we do need a legal opinion. I think we need to also have some more, it's appropriate to have some more conversation with other bodies or entities. I can definitely have the chairperson of the zoning hearing board, you know, come in and be a part of that as well next week, and I will put that phone call into her after this meeting. But one thing I will say too, and I don't want to, I feel like I've been preaching for a while about it, but respectfully, we do appoint people as council, as a body, and I think this may be a side note, but connected, we do appoint people, but we don't dictate to people, at least I don't, my appointees. And they have the right to vote on something based on the way it's presented to them, based on their information and what's given to them in that moment. I don't call them and say, you need to vote this way. I literally have conversations when it's appropriate, you know, and give maybe a councilmatic perspective or my perspective, but then they vote what they think is best. Sometimes they may vote in a way that I disagree with, and I don't want people to just do what I say as my appointee, I want them to have an opinion about things. So I don't have a problem if it was to come to the point where we disagree with our body that we appointed. It doesn't mean that they're not good appointees, that means they have an opinion, and maybe they were given some information that we weren't, and/or vice versa. So I just want to throw that out there too. Just because we have appointed people, doesn't mean we don't disagree with them when situations arise, so. But anyway, I did, we moved this and seconded it, I think the appropriate thing is to call for the vote.
Okay, we got a call for a question, Rose?
Yeah. A motion to table by Mr. Merzke, seconded by Mr. Jones, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan.
No.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Mr. Kwiatkowski.
No.
This motion to table adopts by yeas, five nays, two.
What was the foul?
No, it's four, three. Four, three.
Who else said no? I'm sorry, I missed one. I have a nay for Brennan and a nay for Witherspoon.
Mr. President.
I voted no to table, so.
All right. Then it still adopts four to three.
Okay. So that takes us to committee report?
That takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Pardon, Rose?
It takes us to committee report.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought. Go ahead, Mrs. Arrington, we'll start with you first this week.
No committee report today, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. Winarski?
Since we're still on that topic, I guess one of the things I will be looking for is our council will be looking for, what would be the estimated cost to redo that walk down there at the bayfront, as well as who really is going to owe for it to get it redone? Is it going to be our taxpayer dollars? Is it going to be the convention center authority? It's, we need to get more facts, and that's another reason why I agreed with tabling it. Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Per your direction, I drafted a letter, everyone have that copy of it, to Ed regarding the baseball field. I spoke with Dave Moverhill, and I also spoke with Chief Franklin, who's the president of that organization. He suggests that we do nothing until we receive his letter, which all of us should have in our mail, and we will move forward. We will participate in rehabbing and making that field playable, there's no doubt about it. But I felt that we should take the lead from the president of the organization, former Chief Franklin, and our folks will participate. Also, I received a phone call that I have not spoken to her, she left messages, the mother of Mr. Bolden, and, again, it's in the hand of the Justice Department and the DA, and that takes council totally out of it, that also we have the internal investigation that our chief has done, or maybe is continuing. It does not come back to council, they do not have to report their findings to council, it's in the court of law. Once you obtain an attorney, then we are out of it. So I will give her a call and tell her the same thing that I'm telling you now, we don't have any authority to intervene. I want to thank the PIWA Erie Basketball Chapter for their donation to the Summer Basketball League of $350. That's going to help us tremendously. And also like to thank Pennalec for their donation of $500 toward the basketball league. And if anyone on council got some extra money, we'll take that too. You got this big paycheck. That's it, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Brennan?
No report from my committees, I'm just transitioning right now, and actually, I was kind of under the weather with a flu last week. But in preparation for this future discussion that we're going to have on the walkways, I'd like to kindly suggest that we review all the information that the zoning administrator has provided us. It's pretty clear as to what occurred, what the decisions were, what the details were, and also the Suns have also provided further information on that, and even duplicated some of those efforts. So if we can all review that, I know it's always a time effort to review that, but if we could review that, then we can kind of get through this.
If you get ahold of Rose or have her, you know, ask for the appropriate stuff.
Okay, well, I think it's all been delivered, but I can give her another copy right now, and we'll give an extra copy from anybody's box. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Merzke?
Just a few things to report, I attended many Neighborhood Watch meetings, Robbins Blast, Snoop's, and one of the things that came up, Robbins Blast Neighborhood, they applied for a Greenways grant, and they're looking to put a pavilion in at Pebble Park, which is behind Summer House Cafe, so that's really exciting. They're beautifying the park, and they're at no expense to the taxpayers. They're putting in the manpower and they're buying the materials, and one of the things that they're looking at is solar lighting, so that they don't have to pay for electricity. So it's also a green project, which has allowed them to apply for that Greenway grant. So that's a good thing. We have some good things going on in the community. One of the things that the Snoop's Neighborhood reports is that even in the dead of winter here, people are starting to put trash in the backyards of the unoccupied homes, and that's becoming a problem. And so that's one thing that I did, you know, I brought it to the attention of the administration. And normally, what, and they said that the city's been very good in the spring, they'll come through those alleyways, and so people are dumping stuff in the alleys, and now they're starting to put them actually on private property, and the city comes through. And then, the other thing Snoop's does is they get a grant, and they rent a dumpster every year, and they handle a lot of those issues themselves. But with the weather, they just said to the neighbors there, hold tight because of the snow, and they'll get that in the spring. And then, just finally, I wanted to thank my colleagues on council for supporting the two resolutions that I put forth. The first one for the RACP grant from the state for $5 million in exchange for the taxable agreement to maintain that taxable property, and the other one to respectfully ask our state legislators to consider the city when they redo the legislation for the gaming money. I think those are two good things, and if we can get those to come to fruition, that's going to be very beneficial to the revenue brought into the city, which will ease the burden on our taxpayers. So with that, we also have a finance meeting briefly after this meeting. Mr. Lipton Walker is going to speak to us about the parking authority and ways to generate revenue and modernize with the parking authority. Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate Mel Witherspoon on his election to the Hall of Fame.
Thank you, sir.
It was a distinguished career. He only got blocked once in his whole life.
Ah, here we go.
I snuck up on him from the rear, I will admit that. It doesn't count on the NCAA. But, no, I had the pleasure of watching Mel when I was a young man, and it's a long overdue honor. The Spoon was legendary.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, he won me a lot of money when I was a student. No, I didn't gamble, but thank you, Mel. It seems like here we go again with many of the same problems that come before council. Now we're talking about a sidewalk years ago, and I remember this process went on and on when I was controller. It seems like the authorities and different departments are not using the laser on system. This should have been something that should have been brought to council, and we should have been made aware, but here we aren't once again. Same thing at the airport, I attended the airport meeting, and I read, I had to watch on the news as the county supported the, supported against moving the tower people out of Erie to Buffalo, or wherever they plan on moving the tower people. And here we go again, we're losing TSA, we're losing the control tower people, the county was consulted, but not the city. And I made my feelings evident there, that, you know, what Curtis's delay is on, I back him up when he can't make it. The county was notified, so I'm going to write a letter in support and try to contact Representative Kelly and Senator Casey. I think this is an issue we should have been part of, but once again, we have a lack of communication. And here we go again with the walkway. I'll just say this, if the walkway wasn't important to issue with council, consider the fact that today we voted on three issues involving the waterfront. We voted on giving a variance to a business that's opening up down there, that's changed the scope of their business. We supported the administration in what we all feel is important, that, you know, the property down there needs to be tax exempt, and what did we have? We had two hotels built, you know, everybody expected one, they didn't know the second was coming, and yet you're going to ask Mr. Scott and Mr. Kennedy to pay taxes, and, you know, they could start putting buildings up down there and say, that's part of our thing. So I think it is important that council takes a stand, that the waterfront was worked on hard by people like Councilman Jones and Councilman Kunsel, who put that in there for a reason. And to slide around it by some hocus pocus doesn't get it for me, okay? They have laser ons, and they better start working through them. And this stuff about they're going to do whatever they want to do, that's wrong. I keep asking the question, what happened to the walkway in Left Field when they expanded the convention center? I don't remember coming before council that they abandoned that walkway. Not that we wouldn't have, but once again, people and the authorities are doing what they want to do, and that's not the intent. The intent is, they can do what they want to do up to a certain point, but when there are rules, as we have with the waterfront, they need to start obeying them. And that's why I voted no to table this. I just think time to take a stand. But I'll listen, but I'm not happy with what's going on. You know, it's time that, that's our waterfront, and they know the rules when we set it up. I'll leave a go at that for now. Mrs. Stankovich?
I have no report this week.
Administration, Mrs. Beck?
Just on behalf of ECR and the funding that Mr. Merzke is in favor for the school district, our entire region is at risk for losing funds. It's in the hands of the General Assembly. I know that Cafe has written letters on behalf of gaming revenue staying in the Erie region from Prescott Downs and Casino. It's our money, it's our funding, and I think it's important that it stays here and benefits the people who are supporting the casino. Cafe, again, has written letters, and I know that there is a request for the administration for a letter of support on behalf of Mr. Merzke's resolution. I certainly don't think that is a problem, but it's bigger than the folks in this room. It's in the hands of the legislature, and we have to make sure that we are represented in Harrisburg. Thank you.
Motion to...
No, I'll tell you what, I'll meet with you at the finance meeting and explain the proposed changes to the parking code.
Wow, you know, I'm going to have to start including you, Mr. ...
You don't have to, I just, I'll throw my senses.
You have to learn to read his eyebrows.
Ooh, okay.
You've got ESP.
Do we have motion adjourned?
Meetings adjourned.
City council adjourns at 10:40.
Read his eyebrows.
Mr. Kwiatkowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.